Okay, well, it is seven o'clock. And I am calling the meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order. It's Tuesday, September 10th. And we are in the council chambers in Platteville. So we'll start with roll call.
Robin Klein?
Here.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Barb Stockhausen?
Yes.
Barb Dos?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Yeah.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you want something pulled for separate discussion. We have the council minutes from August 27th. We have payment of bills. We have the financial reports for August. Appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I had two. Brian Loffenberg to the Water and Sewer Commission. And Jenny Gitner-Light to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Committee. Licenses, we have one and two-year licenses to serve alcohol. We also have on the agenda a parade permit for the Platteville High School Homecoming Parade, which is Friday, September 27th. That parade is at 2:00. We have a street closing request. Hickory Street between Pine and Greenwood for the Newman Olympics by St. Augie's Parish on Friday, September 20th, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Main Street between Chestnut and Oak for Sweet Treats by the Platteville Main Street Program. That date will be Saturday, October 26th, from 10:00 until 1:00. We have a resolution proclaiming October 2019 as United Nations Month in Platteville. And we have, I don't think Halloween has anything to do with that.
Next line.
I know. It's just kinda weird. And we have Halloween trick-or-treating hours for Thursday, October 31st, from 4:30 to Do I hear a motion?
A move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ken, seconded by Robin, to approve the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have, next on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I'll start by congratulating Platteville for a very successful Dairy Days weekend. Parade, all the activities at Legion Park, historic reenactment, a very nice weekend. So congratulations to Platteville. Next, we have Ben Belkey from UW Platteville to give us an update.
Ben Belkey, 800 South Chestnut Street. Hopefully you guys aren't bored of me yet. I know I've been doing these quite a bit. For those who don't know, I'm the student body president of the University of Wisconsin Platteville. And I kind of have been coming here to do some updates on what we have going on around campus, just to let the community know what's happening. So one of the first things I'd like to say, I would like to say thank you for the lights at the crosswalk lights. There's some at Southwest where it runs across there, as well as behind Oldsbyck Hall. If you guys don't know what these are, pretty much they like catches when you're walking across and the lights show up for the cars. That's really nice, especially on that Southwest. I live in Roundtree, as you heard, so it's really nice to have that, you know, signal to make sure that we're safe. Next thing is pioneers paid forward. So that happened over Welcome Weekend. We had 77 people sign up to do it, which totaled 308 hours for everybody in total. And I personally helped with the Roundtree branch pulling regweed. Other people went around to the different communities and stayed in our community as well. So that's kind of a nice thing that we did. As well as LEED certification. So this is kind of a neat thing with Sesquenntennial Hall. Sesquenntennial Hall is gonna be LEED certified now, which, for those of you who don't know it, means leadership in engineering and environmental design. We're actually able to use state funds to pay for the LEED certification, which has been previously available. So that's pretty interesting, as well as we're one of the few UW schools that will have a LEED certified academic building. So that's a pretty big development that's been happening. As well as, the last thing is the bandana project. So Senate specifically is partnering with our campus' bandana project. For those of you who don't know, Madison, UW Madison kinda started it. What it is, is you go around, you tell people about where different resources are on campus for mental health and sexual assault. They carry around, they have a green bandana that they tie to their backpack that signifies you're a safe person to come up and talk to. And that person would give the, give the person some cards of where certain things are located on campus and the surrounding communities. So we're partnering with them, since they're technically not a student organization, to raise awareness for those. And hopefully in the spring, we kinda have a big, whether it's a festival, something along those lines, when Sexual Assault Awareness Month happens. So those are kinda some developments that we've been handling on the university side. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we have Deb Browning.
Hi, I'm Deb Browning, at 375 South Chestnut Street in Platteville, and I belong to the Commission on Aging. I'd just like to invite everyone, we're having September 21st a brat sale. And where are we having it? Heizer's. All right? Mr. Heizer is gracious enough to allow us to be there again. Starts at 10:00, so I expect to see everybody and everybody out there. All right? We're gonna have a great time. All right? It's a good way to raise money for the seniors. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. And who doesn't want a brat? Man, I missed mine on Saturday. All right, that's all I have under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. So we'll move on to reports. The first is Police and Fire Commission. Robin, anything?
Can I read a note here?
Sure.
From Bill Kloster, who presented at our last meeting, asking us, he says, "I urge you all to fund the fire department. CIP requests for funding of study to determine what is needed in a new fire center. Spoke with the Police and Fire Commission at their last meeting and nearly, for nearly an hour, outlining the need for this study. The study will greatly aid our chances of getting state and federal funding. Waiting will only increase costs and put us further from a desperately needed new facility. I'm attaching new information on what the study would accomplish and why it is needed." So obviously, I won't read all of that, but that was emphasis, emphasized greatly at that meeting, so I said I would relay.
Thank you. Commission on Aging, Barb?
I'm pleased that Deb comes and gives a presentation, so I really have nothing to add.
Water and Sewer Commission, Nichols, Killian, and/or Shanley.
No addition.
Museum Board, Barb?
Nothing to add, except read your email, because you get many regarding the museum. Attend volunteer.
They have now Wednesday, Green Wednesdays or something.
Yes, that's Volunteer Day.
Yeah.
Two hours.
Okay, good. Other reports, Water and Sewer Financial Reporter in the packet, the Airport Financial Reporter in the packet, and Department Progress Reports were in the packet. Any questions?
Just one question for police. You have one vacancy, is that correct? And that has occurred since February? Because I read, I read the minutes for Police and Fire, and it said they had 20.
Twenty vacancies?
Twenty, no.
We have 20 authorized, 20 sworn officers. And we've had our most recent person resigned in early July.
Okay, thank you. So you're looking for one.
Looking for one. A good one.
Okay, any other questions on Department Progress Reports? Otherwise, we'll move to our action items for tonight. The first of which is the nomination slash appointment of a council alderperson. First of all, I'd like to say it was a delight that we had five people apply for the vacant position. And I see that at least four of them, I believe, one, two, three, I thought four were in the audience. Why did I think four were here? Oh, Ben is here too. Yeah, okay. So four of the five are in the audience, and the fifth candidate did tell us that there was a conflict for night, for tonight. So extending sincere thanks to Sun Sun, did I say that right? Thompson. Stacy Strobel, who's not here tonight. Ben Belkey, who you met earlier when he gave his report from UW Platteville. Mike Din. And Jason Arts. So very sincere thanks to all of you for not only your application, but for also speaking to the council last Tuesday night. So we are now at the point where we will fill this vacancy. And so our process is going to be, and I'm gonna kind of read through this, each alderperson here could nominate one person, but only one person. Everyone can second one person. So you can nominate somebody and second somebody else. But each person up here actually has a nomination that they can make and a second they can make. And after nominations have, and each nomination requires a second. So if somebody's nominated and doesn't get a second, then that nomination would fail. After all the candidates, after we have the nominations, then we'll have a little discussion by the council. And then we will vote by paper ballot. This will not be secret ballot, it will be paper ballot. Wisconsin State Statute, Section 1988 prohibits voting by secret ballot. So when, if we vote by paper ballot, that means that the person who votes will put their name at the top of the ballot, and then they will put the name of the person they're voting for under their name. And then when Candace reads the votes, she will read who voted and what the vote was. So, because according to law, that's the way it has to be. So I, it takes a majority of the council to, to elect someone, so it will take four votes. So I have a very lengthy memo here that we've tried to define how, if things happen, and there's not four votes, how we move through to get to a candidate and seat someone. And by the way, one of the options is eventually draw from a hat, if we can't reach consensus any other way. So, at this point then, I would entertain nominations for this appointment to the council.
I nominate Mike Din.
We have to have a second before we finish any nomination. Every nomination must have a second. There's no second, there's no nomination.
Okay, I nominate Thompson.
Sun Sun Thompson?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so Ken has nominated Sun Sun Thompson, and Barb has seconded that nomination. Are there other nominations?
I nominate Stacy Strobel.
I would nominate Jason Arts.
Second. Oh, I can't have two seconds.
I will second. Okay, Eileen has nominated Jason Arts, and a second by Robin. Are there other nominations? There are no other nominations. We have two candidates that have been nominated and received a second. Those candidates are Sun Sun Thompson and Jason Arts. So you will now take your paper ballot in front of you. You will write your name at the top of the ballot. And then you will write the person who you are voting for underneath your name.
Robin Klein voted for Jason Arts. Barbara Dos voted for Shan Shan Thompson. Ken Killian voted for Shan Shan Thompson. Isaac Shanley voted for Jason Arts. Eileen Nichols voted for Jason Arts. We have a tie.
So we have a 3-3 tie. So according to the process that I outlined, that has been outlined, and actually that was outlined earlier by our attorney, if two candidates each receive three votes, in other words, there's a tie, there is to be a discussion, and then we will vote again on those two candidates. So this is a time for you to talk about your candidate, or say whatever you want to say. Does anybody have?
Well, I guess I'll go ahead. All the candidates, in my view, were very qualified, and I was very pleased that we had that many candidates. I nominated Jason for a couple of reasons. One is that his comment struck me when he said that he really, he's a student here, stayed here after he graduated, married, has children now, and is teaching. And his comment was that the City of Platteville has so many good things going for it. What he wants is to continue that, to continue to move that forward. And I thought, that just struck me, that that is exactly how I feel about the City of Platteville. You know, same thing happened, I met my husband when I was a student at UWP, and we chose to live in Platteville after we graduated. So the idea that we have a lot of good things going for us, I think that's such a positive statement. And then just to say, I just wanna build on that, I wanna, I wanna move that forward. So I really appreciated that comment. The other thing is that he also mentioned that he had owned income property, and that he was sad to see, probably wasn't his word, but disappointed to see that the rental inspection program was no longer in force, and that was not our decision, that was a state decision, unfortunately, for the City of Platteville. And that, that I think was a plus, because we've talked about the housing study, we've talked about the need to perhaps rehab some rental properties, perhaps try to build new properties. So I think that having the background in home ownership in that respect is, is a plus as well. And I, I think that his other comment, one of the questions that we asked for those of you who weren't there was, if you got a million dollar grant, what would you do with it? And there were some really, really great answers to that question. And again, Jason's answer was, he would use it to build a YMCA. Now, my first thought was, yeah, well, that's probably never gonna happen. And then I thought, the event center, and I thought, but we made that happen as a community. And, and as I look at our aging population, and I also look at the younger population, we have people who wanna move into a condo because they don't wanna have to shovel the snow anymore, but they want a place to go to exercise, they want a place to go to recreate, they want a place to gather with others, and a Y or a community center, if we don't call it a Y, if we call it a community center. I think, you know, that's a goal that maybe we just need to always think about, because I think it would reach all age levels in our community. So for that reason, I nominated Jason. There were some, as I said, there were some incredible other answers to all the questions, so I had a really tough time, but in the end, I've decided that, you know, that, that's the person that I was gonna nominate this evening, and that's why I did that.
I had nominated, well, I also seconded yours, right?
Yes.
And what struck me is that he was involved with Academic Staff, Academic Staff Senate. I was the first chair when it first started. So that was close to my heart. Shan Shan is who I...
Sun Sun.
Sun Sun, sorry. I've worked with her now at the Museum and the Commission on Aging, and those are two very important positions that we have. Diversity, she comes from China, correct? And I think that's very important in our community, because we are cosmopolitan type of environment. Different people, different involvement, continual involvement is really important to me. And that's what I bring to the table.
I wanna speak up to support Jason, but I too was so appreciative of all of the other candidates. It really is a very difficult decision, because I was really happy to see just that there was a good amount of interest, but then all of those interviews went so well. I mean, there were, I want you all to be active on committees. Like, there's each one of you, as you were talking, I'm like, they really need to be on that committee, they really need to be on that committee. So just to reiterate, this is not like a stopping point, but a kickoff point for your activity with the city. But as far as Jason, I think we've been living parallel lives, came to Platteville around the same time, and both went to the same program, and didn't really know each other for a long time, but kept bumping, I think, circles, because we have pretty similar interests. And that Y conversation is one that I feel really strong about, but try not to push too hard. So to have some more support for that would be fabulous. But I also just think he's a really level-headed person, who is a great listener, and is going to dig deep to find, from all perspectives, what can be brought... balanced as we make our decisions. So I'll give my support there.
Anybody else who wants to speak? Otherwise, I guess we vote again. We have two candidates. You can see, it's not an easy decision.
Is that how you pronounce it? Barbara Stockhausen, Sun Sun Thompson. Robin Klein, Jason Arts. Barbara Dos, Jason Arts. Ken Killian, Sun Sun Thompson. Isaac Shanley, Jason Arts. Eileen Nichols, Jason Arts. The candidate is Jason Arts.
Good. So Jason has been elected, or appointed, will be appointed to this vacant position, and that appointment will take place at the next council meeting, which is on October 10th. Okay? All right? And again, thank you to everyone. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the one-way Bonson Street update.
Thank you. This is an update on the conversion of Bonson between Furnace and Market to a one-way street. Council approved that, subject to staff making a proposal for a cost of the conversion and a recommendation to the source of funds before approving the conversion. I have enclosed a diagram of the proposed conversion, creates a curb in Island to direct northbound traffic on Bonson to turn west onto Market. It creates a handicap parking stall behind the curb island with an ADA crossing to the west side of Bonson. It will allow for landscape in the, in the island for aesthetics, and to give those additional visual clues that it's a one-way street. We received a quote from Lowinger Brothers for slightly over $7,000. Staff estimates that adding signage, painting, smaller ornamental tree plants, and rock can be accomplished for a total project cost of less than $10,000. We're recommending that this be absorbed in the contract street repairs budget. This is the budget item for thin overlays and other contracted street repairs. Currently, there is sufficient funding to cover this. So staff is recommending approval of this design concept with a cost not to exceed $10,000, with the funding to come from the contract street repairs line item.
Any questions by anyone?
Howard, on here, I think you post the arrows on how to drive around the square. Can that be painted? Those, you know, the arrows to show where one-way streets are painted on the pavement?
They can be.
You know what I'm trying to say?
They, they can be. It's just, we generally don't do that because of snow and other things, but...
I just asked.
We, we can certainly do that if that, if that helps.
And again, it would be up to the people who have parking lots that look like drive-through areas, the Congregational Church, and the building at 190 Market Street. It would be up to them to purchase and install signs that say, and to police that themselves. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Are the areas that you have for the future parking stalls, you've kinda got three areas there, will they be assigned, is there a states for this time, no parking?
Oh, yes, at this point, we would only strike the, the one handicap parking stall. But what we're saying is that there is room for two, possibly three, before you get to the corner. We, we would look at that before we brought that back to you. The idea here being that we wanna make sure that there would be enough room for somebody, especially if they're going eastbound next to the church, and then trying to turn southbound, they wouldn't, it would be hard for them to see somebody backing out of a parking stall. So we wanna make sure that, that we didn't get too close to Furnace Street, where we would cause potential problems that way.
I, I understand that, but I'm thinking, I could see somebody coming around the corner and seeing that area there, and, well, we can park.
But yes.
Yep.
You're, you're correct. We, Ken and Will signed that.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I assume, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the staff recommendation, excuse me, recommendation to execute the conversation, excuse me, the conversion of Bonson Street to a one-way southbound street in accordance with the enclosed conversion diagram, with funding to come from the CIP funds, contract, excuse me, contract street repairs not to exceed $10,000.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, second.
And a second. Isaac and Eileen, we'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Those are the action items on our agenda tonight. So now we will move on to information and discussion items. The first is which, an ordinance, the first of which is an ordinance designating a mid-block crossing on Chestnut Street.
Yes, so mid-block crossing on Chestnut Street. So the east side of Roundtree Commons apartment, there's also a parking lot where students are parking, and then just crossing the street to make this more safe. Community Safe Routes discussed this at two meetings in July, and then in August, where they made a recommendation to place the mid-block crossing. They'd like to place it from the current entrance to the parking lot, and also we would add pedestrian signage on existing poles. We're not going to move or add any additional poles on the parking lot or property. The reason we would like this is because it would add more visuals for people to see that people are crossing there. We don't recommend putting the crossing at the intersections, because the students will most likely still just cross at the cross, mid-block crossing, because it's gonna be 200-plus feet for them to go up around. And it's also not the best condition for crosswalk... And it's also not the best condition for crosswalks at those intersections. We did discuss this with Roundtree Commons and also University about putting in the flashing signs. However, it's more than $6,000 for that cost. And considering the parking lot is currently for sale, we did not want to put in flashing signs if that parking lot is developed. So we're going to just put in the basic standard pedestrian crossing signs for a cost of $500. That's the pavement marking and the signs. So staff does recommend placing the mid-block crossing to align with the curb ramp on the Roundtree Commons property. And there's also a sample affirmative motion, and you also have the ordinance for review.
Are there questions of Catherine? Oh, we have before, yeah, are there questions of Catherine first? Catherine, I just have a question about the $500 comes from where?
Howard, where is that going to?
That would, that would be absorbed by the street department's budget. We have sign budget and then the painting would be absorbed as part of the regular budget.
I do have a couple of questions, Barbara.
Yep.
Looking at the, the colored photo that you have on the back of the resolution, I don't know, at least in my packet is that way. So there's a sidewalk that comes on, it would be the north side of Roundtree Commons, right? And it comes down to Chestnut. But there's no sidewalk across.
Right.
And there's no sidewalk on the, would be the south side of, I guess, Gridley or whatever that is. There, I don't see any other sidewalk, right? So the only sidewalk we really have is coming right down around to Commons, okay. Are there other mid-block pedestrian crossings in the city?
Mr. Belkey just talked about one mid-block on Hickory Street between, between Pine and Main Street by Olds Vic Hall. I guess you could also consider the one from Southwest Hall over to the parking lots, technically a mid-block crossing way down on Southwest Road. Those are two that come to mind.
I believe, and I, I believe a third one would be on Longhorn.
Well, yeah.
Greenwood.
Longhorn.
Yeah, Longhorn Drive, that's, that's a university street, not a city street. But yeah, that is, that would also be considered mid-block crossings in there.
I was just curious.
Those, those are ones that I can recall off the top of my head.
Okay, just curious how many more we may have in the city already. And then was any discussion given if, if the mid-block crossing is approved? Was any discussion had about signing something further up Chestnut if you're going north, saying pedestrian crossing ahead or anything like that? Because you are coming down the hills probably a little faster than you should be? And maybe just to warn folks that there is a pedestrian crossing coming up? Does that ever get done or is that not common?
And on the area, Ross Howard?
Yeah, we would have to look at, at things. I mean, it's very common for, for K-12 school crossings to have a, what we call an advanced warning sign like that. For something like this, like I say, we would have to kind of look at the conditions. It may or may not be appropriate to do something like that. Plus also, we would have to look at where something like that would necessarily be, you know, so it wouldn't confuse drivers. Because if you put it north of Gridley, drivers could be confused that, that we're identifying a crossing at Gridley. So it would be kind of tough to do something like that.
Well, I was just curious if that maybe would be another safety feature since it is a mid-block crossing, which is a little unusual.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we do have somebody who wants to speak from the audience.
So can I make a comment sometime? Well, I drive that street twice to three times a day, four times a day. And we really need something because children always wear dark. They always wear black and you cannot see them. And I think we need to talk safety. It's middle of the night, I don't care, they wear black. And I've had a few moments of slamming on the brakes because I couldn't see them. So I recommend we consider this.
But there won't be a light.
Well, there's a sign.
All right, Dan.
Like Water Street.
Dan Dressens from Delta Three has asked to speak about the mid-block crossing.
Dan Dressens, Delta Three Engineering, 915 West Main and 875 South Chestnut. There is also a mid-block crossing on West Main Street, too.
Yes, yeah.
Coming, yep, coming across from Stonebridge Apartments. Yep, so. But I'd like to just mention that I would agree that is a very dangerous, I drive that several times a day. There is no single point of crossing for the students. And at various times, there might be three or four different groups of students crossing at a time. So I think having a mid-block crossing that's marked might try to make things a little bit more organized and a little bit safer, so just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Anybody else? Otherwise, this will be on the agenda for action at the next meeting, which is October 8th, not October 10th. Tuesday is the 8th of October. Thank you, Candace, for looking at the calendar. All right, so that'll be an action item on the 8th. Next information and discussion item is creating additional assigned parking locations within the city of Platteville.
Thank you. In June, the council increased the number of parking stalls available to rent from 37 to 45. As of September 3rd, all 45 rented. Plus, at that time, we had nine people. Now we have 10 people on a waiting list in case additional stalls are available to rent. We've been performing parking counts. And on your table, there's an update to the, to the spreadsheet that was in the packet. It includes numbers up to and including six, little after 6 o'clock tonight, showing the different items. Other than this past Saturday at Dairy Days when practically all of our lots were full, Lot Number 5 over at Pine Street, the, the most vehicles that have been parked in there over the past couple of weeks, we still had 10 vacant parking stalls.
Well, Lot 5 is on Roundtree Avenue.
No, Lot 5 is the Pine Street parking lot over by the post office. That's the one that, that we added the eight additional parking stalls to in June. And those are the ones that the, the people who are on the waiting list would prefer to use if they, if they rented, if we were able to rent parking stalls. And what I'm saying is that the fewest empty stalls, if you will, that have been counted so far, except for during the Dairy Days Parade, was 10 empty stalls in that parking lot. And so one, you know, one of the possibilities, one of the options would be to convert up to eight of those basically 10 empty spaces into rented assigned parking stalls. As you can see, I've got a number of, of options here. You know, we could always do nothing. Basically, the people on the waiting list would be contacted if a space becomes available. Otherwise, you know, tough luck. We could convert four spaces or eight spaces in the lot. Reason why I'm saying that is because of the configuration. It would be very easy for us to put a single pole in the middle of four spaces and, and basically put arrows to assign the, the spaces. We could look at converting spaces in Lot 2 Mineral Street, which is the one right behind me here, or the angle parking in front of the Police Department. But if you look at the traffic, the, the counts, there are a number of times when the all-day stalls in both of those lots are full or nearly full.
What does HC for, HC mean?
HC was handicapped.
Oh, handicap, okay.
Sorry. What we have is, we have, for example, in this lot right behind me, Lot Number 2, there are 25 all-day parking stalls and one handicap parking stall. And so you can see from the spreadsheet how many were full and how many were empty of the regular stalls, the handicap stalls, at the different dates and times in, in there. And then there's another sheet for the stalls in front of the Police Department. There's seven all-day spots. There are, there's one handicap stall and there's two 30-minute stalls in that location. And you can kind of see, I've also colored in yellow plate times when there were no empty stalls. Lot 3, Third Street is the one that's behind the Owl Cafe. The next street over, there are nine spaces back there. Lot 4 is the one in Oak Street at the corner of Oak and Main. And then Lot 5 is Pine Street over by the post office. Lot 6 is Roundtree Avenue. There are a number of spaces available in the Roundtree lot. But that's also one of the furthest locations away from the center of downtown. And last time when we tried this renting parking stalls, we tried renting parking stalls in that Roundtree parking lot and we never were able to fill those parking stalls.
I, I would, I would remind you, though, that we left the other stalls near to town free.
That's correct.
And available.
That's, that's correct.
They were free and available in town and you had to pay for them to go farther. That probably was a detriment. So now that the internal lots have been paid for, you know, maybe it's worth a try to, to do some of the Roundtree spots.
And that is one of the options is to convert some of those parking spaces to assigned parking. There are quite a number of, of vacant stalls in that parking lot as it is right now. So, you know, taking eight or even 10 of those stalls would not impact anyone at this point, based on the numbers we've seen to date. Lots 7 and 8 are the ones north of Furnace Street over here. And those are free overnight parking. And those have, those have been full or nearly full pretty much all the time.
And you'll continue to monitor these?
Correct.
Until October, okay. And
I have a question.
Current, one, one other question. We, the money that we get off these rentals, what happens to it?
The rental money goes into a separate account that is available for maintenance and reconstruction of parking lots or other downtown improvements as the council directs, but primarily for, for redoing parking lots.
And do we have one of those in the budget, hopefully for next year?
I'm, I'm requesting that we do at least one of the parking lots, either Lot 5 on Pine Street by the post office or Lot 4 Oak Street. It'll depend on how the budget turns out, budget.
But it was included in the city manager's proposed budget. That was already established. All right, Ken, you had a question?
Yes. The answer may be here, but for the stalls that are rented, how long are people staying, keeping their cars in those stalls? Are they staying there the whole, all day long? Four days a week, three days a week, all week? Have you checked that yet?
I do not, I do not check to see how long or often people stay in those stalls. Once they rent the stalls, they can use them or not use them as they see fit, as long as they keep paying the money. And, and we have contact information for them so that when, when it's time to clean the, the parking lot in the wintertime, we, we direct them to another parking lot while we clean the one that they're in. And it's been working for us, it worked for us last year.
Well, what I'm thinking is that Roundtree Avenue may be more desirable if people keep their cars there for a long-term basis. If they kept them there the whole week or three, four days, then there wouldn't be so much of an issue as far as being located away from downtown. I was curious about what was happening as far as usage. Thank you.
Howard, I know we've been told this before, but just to refresh my memory, you can rent the parking space for a year or less than a year? Is that correct?
The, the program that we have is, we would prefer you rent it for a full year, starting September 1st. But we do have the option for doing it for the academic year, September through May, and then a separate for the summer months for those who, who wish to break that up. As I said, we, we would prefer people do it for the full year, but we understand that, you know, the nature of the beast here.
They're all the same price, right? Or is there?
Correct.
Would we look at evaluating if there's a premium for certain lots? Or like Roundtree giving a price break?
That's, that's a choice that we could look into if that's what the council wishes to, to do. We haven't done anything like that.
How much is the rental now? $30 a month?
Yeah, I believe that's what it is. I'd have to look at it. But if you purchase the entire year upfront, there's a price break. I think it's a little over $300, 308, 310, if you pay for the entire year upfront. Otherwise, we do have the ability to do ACH monthly, but that would be at the $30 a month. So, so you either, you either pay for it all upfront or you sign up for ACH withdrawal every month for the $30 a month.
In the past, I recommend that that Roundtree have to be priced at $20 per month to take, take away the, the issue supposedly of distance from City Main Street. So I think it's something worth considering.
Would it be fair to request that you call the people on the waitlist to see if they would be interested in Roundtree at that rate? Just to deal a market kind of?
We can, we can attempt to contact them. We do have contact information for them because, you know, they would like to be contacted if, if a stall becomes available. So we do have that info.
Okay, any other questions on streets, other, or on parking? Otherwise, we'll expect to see and make some kind of decision at our next meeting on the 8th of October. Let's move on to the solid waste and recycling agreement 2020. And Howard, I believe that's yours.
Yep. Our current solid waste and recycling contract with Farady Incorporated expires on December 31st of this year. It's a multi-year contract for our single-family and duplex houses. And as part of that, they also And as part of that, they also serve city properties. We basic, we start out with a single charge for the solid waste and a separate charge for the recycling. And then, per the contract, it's capped, it's adjusted based on the Consumer Price Index. And in this last contract capped at three percent. Lately, it's been running under two percent. You know, in years past, the contract was established with the understanding that Farady Incorporated would keep our costs low by selling recyclables as partial compensation for the cost of service. You know, but recently, they haven't been receiving money. They've had to pay money for people to take their recycling. So, we need to look at different alternatives. They're proposing a committee of citizens and possibly, and with a council member, to work with them and with staff to look at alternatives and come up with easily implemented, cost-effective ways of continuing our service. And so what they're proposing is to extend the current contract for one year with a cost adjustment on the recycling and that cost adjustment being seventy-five cents per household per month additional. There would be no additional increase to the cost of solid waste collection. And that would allow them to continue the service as we're going and, and give us the one year to look at different alternatives for our solid waste and recycling services and then get a full multi-year contract after that.
All right, Ken has a question.
I have a question. I'm looking at the sample motion. What's going to be the total price? It says here, six thirty-six plus four thirty-six, which makes ten seventy-two. Then I look up underneath recommendation, I think there's a typo. It says six thirty-six and four sixty-three, which makes ten ninety-nine.
Yep.
So which one is correct?
It's the ten ninety-nine, sorry.
Ten ninety-nine?
Yes.
Not ten seventy-two?
Yes, four sixty-three. You're correct, thank you.
I was hoping that the four thirty-six was.
Nope.
Any other questions?
I have a question for the firm.
All right, so Ed and Greg Farady are in the office audience. So we'll have, it appears that Ed is going to be the spokesperson here.
Rock, paper, scissors, I got it.
You got it. You had to push yourself, so it has to be.
Name is Ed Farady, Farady Incorporated, Vice President.
Could you give us a brief summary as to why recycling has gone down as far as returns? Is it because foreign countries don't take our waste?
Brief summary, that's tough for me to be brief about anything, but about recycling especially. It all has to do with China shutting down and not taking recycling from not only us, but the whole world. So China used to take a third of the nation's, our nation's recyclables. And they closed their doors because they were getting a lot of contamination in their product. So they brought it up to where they build a, they called it the green fence or the green sword. And they had a half a percentage contamination allowable in their recyclables. That's almost impossible, well, it actually is. So we flooded the markets. So right now, we're looking at recycling. As that example said, you know, just two years ago, we were getting a six-dollar return on our recyclables. And we take ours, and it's a single stream. We send it to Pelletary Waste Systems in Madison, where they have automation and manpower that sorts all that. They sell it, we kind of split the proceeds. It's an eighty-twenty split based on markets. They get twenty, we get eighty percent. So it used to be, we were getting about six dollars a ton in 2017. Now we're paying thirty-three. And it's because all that extra recyclables now became available. It also has to do with oil prices being so low for so long. It, it has to deal with plastics and everything else. So on the one side, I like the fact that fuel's not bad, but on the other side, I'm not so happy about it. So it's been pretty tough with the recycling markets. Honestly, I don't see a change coming anytime soon. I, I would tell you that I would be happy to see it in a year, to see some rebound from the markets. I have some optimists in my business that are friends that think it'll be less than that. We have a side bet on it. And they say six months, I say a year. Which doesn't matter, but what we want to really do with the committee, if I can address that too, is we, we want to look at the alternatives to the way we do things. And that is, we've heard a lot of comments from citizens in Platteville. Karen, the city manager, had stated, you know, the carts, the nice, you know, stuff blowing around. Can we contain things? So we're looking at automation and carts. And we want to look at that with the city to see if that's something you'd be interested in. We want to discuss those alternatives. We want to see if we can simplify the recycling and maybe just go ones and twos plastics and not three through sevens. You know, that are the harder things to get rid of. The law says ones and twos. We've had three through sevens since ninety-eight, some. It's been twenty years that we, because we were able to find a market then. Twenty years later, we can't. So, that's, that's a little bit about what's going on with recycling. It's just getting tougher and tougher. There's places in the United States that are collecting recycling and it's actually, after a process bailed, it's being shipped to a landfill because it's cheaper to dispose of it than it is to ship to a recycler to make something out of it. So those are in states that don't have laws that say you have to. Our state says you have to recycle and you can't throw away.
Do you have any idea, information of what has happened in, with incineration? I know there used to be one near Chicago, incineration plant producing, I believe, electricity. Has that been a down trend, up trend?
Waste of energy is, is a, always used to be a really tough thing. They're making some progress in like gasifications with plastics. In fact, I just had a conversation on the phone with a gentleman today that's, was trying to get information on things like that. So, so I see some things on the horizon that might change some of that. But that, you know, if they're doing gasification or incineration, we're not recycling anymore either. We're going to pick it all up and it's going to be either burned or turned to a gas or used in some way that way. It's not going to be recycled. So it's going to be a different turn. And I mean, I'm going to be honest, I'm, I'm not a big fan of incineration. I think when you burn things and it goes up, it, it has to come down. So I, I, you know, but I'm not sure that burying it in the ground forever is a great thing either, so. I don't, I don't, you know, as far as incineration around here, it won't happen. It won't happen. There's not enough stream, there's not enough investment, and there's not enough users of that power. There's, you know, I mean, I know you can get a line to go anywhere, but you have to have a pretty constant steady stream. You have to have a pretty, you know, La Crosse actually has one and they, I think, do okay with it.
She must have had one.
Yeah, that didn't, that didn't last very long, did it?
Well, that was a slight problem, as I recall.
Yeah, that, that one was problems from the very beginning. So I think there's a few counties that still feel that, so.
They still be paying for that?
Yeah, I think we are.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask if you could speak to sorting and that years ago, you know, we had to be much more careful about how we did our recycling and you've gone to the.
We used to be sourced separate. So you would say, "Just come to the curb," and we would take your bin and we would put the different items in the different compartments on the truck. And we'd take it back to our facility and dump it in different bunkers. And then we would bail it and we would send it ourselves to the end markets. Now we collect it single stream, we mix it all together. We'll, we'll actually even pick it up under compaction with a garbage truck. And then we take that and we transfer that into a semi-trailer where it goes to Madison, dumped on the floor, goes across, I mean, it's millions of dollars' worth of equipment. If you're really interested in looking, the single streams are pretty fascinating. Just Google it. But they have magnets and electronic eddy currents. They have optical sorters that can do plastics with robots. And I mean, it's, it's a pretty cool thing. We don't have one because they're really, really expensive. And what we pick up from all of our customers, everywhere that we service, operates their machine for about an hour a day. So that's why we don't have one. Now, that kind of recycling has, I'll say, caused some contamination problems with the recyclables. So marketability, it lowered them slightly, but it's a catch-22. If I go away from single stream, I'm going to put two and a half times the manpower, three times the manpower and trucks on the street to do the same amount. So I'm going to burn how much more fuel. And then if we talk about manpower and we talk about labor right now, what you can't find is labor. So, single stream's not going to go away. They're just going to perfect how they do it. They're going to clean the system more and more. And it's getting better, but, and markets eventually will come up, but I still think I'm, I'm right, it's going to be close to a year. But when I say markets come up, it's not going to be like it used to be. We, we saw some pretty high markets in the past years. I mean, we got to go back a ways. But at one time cardboard was, you know, two hundred and some dollars a ton. Now it's thirty. Paper is zero. To us, zero.
What can you say about styrofoam? I mean, I.
Throw it in the garbage.
Yeah, but it, it's not to be recycled.
Right, it should just go in waste.
Are there any places going to the, to a law saying no more styrofoam? I mean, it's.
Well, you know, any, you can do anything you want, pretty much. I mean, look, there's bans on plastic bags in a lot of communities and states and things are looking at doing that. So could you ban styrofoam? Yeah, not, you can be practical and do it. Too many things are packed in that stuff, too many things would change. But you, you could try. I think you're probably better off to develop a safer type of packing material than, you know, banning and have it replaced or, or if gasification with plastics works, then it doesn't matter. You can just go ahead and turn it into an energy, so.
So Ed, when you say carts, this is the.
Hinged wheel cart.
That, and then it's a.
We got a little robotic arm and, or we would have, and it would grab your cart and dump it and set it back down. So everybody would have a, you know, blue cart for garbage and a green cart for recycling in various sizes. There's pros and cons, but I mean, we have lots of time to talk about that.
Can you speak to the biggest cause of contamination aside from just random mix? But something, I've seen like the plastic bags jamming machines and things.
Three through sevens, three through sevens plastics. Because, I mean, even though I said, but plastic bags are, they don't really want them at all. Worst thing you can do as a reci, as recycling is put them in a black plastic bag. They'll throw that in the garbage when they get it because they don't know what's in it and they're not going to open up something that potentially is hazardous. And they tell me flatten your cardboard is the biggest thing that you can do to keep things from going the wrong way.
Well, we put just those basics into like our water bill recently. I don't.
Well, we, we do and we have it online and, I mean, we.
And, and you go to school and, and tell kids.
They come see me, they, yeah, we talk to everybody that we can talk to.
They have to take out their recyclables to follow those advice.
Any other questions, Mr. Farady?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Otherwise, this will be on the agenda as an action item for our next meeting on October eighth. And the math will be corrected prior to distribution. Okay, next on our agenda, the Delta Three contract renewal.
Yes. Last time we were discussing and Alder Person Shanley asked about the Delta Three contract. Quite honestly, I had overlooked the approaching deadline. That contract had an extension through December 31st of this year. Surveying work for next year should begin shortly. So at this point, there are three options. Either approve a one-year contract extension and staff would do a RFP process in spring so that they could start working with us in fall of 2020 for budgeting, planning, surveying for that year. We could approve another multi-year extension of the current contract with Delta and, Delta Three Engineering. Or you could direct staff to do the RFP process now. The issue with doing one right now is it would delay them coming onboard, which would potentially delay doing the surveying and bidding of projects for 2020.
Any questions? The current con, when, when, if we extend the current contract, is there a built-in? I mean, we talked about for the.
At, at the back of this, Delta Three has provided a, a proposal or a cost schedule and they would, they would fix their rates for up to three years, 20, 21, and 22, at the rate, it's, it's at the back of the packet.
Other questions? Again, this will be on, for action on the eighth of October, to either renew this for one year, to renew it for a year and go out for an RFP, or to go out for an RFP before the beginning of next year. I believe those were the three options. If anyone has questions before the meeting, please get to Howard with those questions. I believe that that is the end of the agenda for this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn, we'll vote.
Fine.
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.